In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Michael. Please, censorship officer and managing director for NBC, you can take the panel. Before I start, I would like to acknowledge United Nations Development Program, United Nations Development Program, UNDP. They have a program that they set up at parliament. So we were unable to do our inquiries in early this year because we face funding, like everyone else, we also face funding issues. But UN, UN step in, UNDP step in, and they assist us. So we are able to complete our inquiries across the country, the four regional inquiries. So on behalf of the committee and the people of parliament, I would like to acknowledge and thank UNDP for their support to the parliamentary process, which is a pillar of our democracy, maintaining our democracy. Also, I would like to also thank the contributors from the regions. They have come in to contribute, and their contribution, that they participate in the regions, is the basis of this inquiry now. So whatever questions and whatever issues they raised in the regions, we are now taking them on board and we will ask the concerned agency of government so that they can respond, so that we will see how we can address those concerns and challenges at the regional level. So we expect the respective government agencies to be present so that they can respond to those issues and challenges. And so that the people from the region should know that whatever they mentioned, they mentioned or they raised at the regional inquiries is taken up and relate to the relevant agency so that the process is complete. Anytime you may go on, also give contribution, also what happened to those subsistence, what happened to those issues they raised. So with this committee, we want to make sure that there is a track or some sort of line. So when we went to the regions and when we collect information, yes, we bring it up and we give it to the line agency to address those issues and concerns. So the inquiries today and tomorrow will be basically to respond to the issues and challenges faced by the region. Wagonee is too far from the people. So when we do the regions and provinces, they're very close to the people. So when they raise those issues, it's important that we take it up and the national agency can address those issues. Awesome, the inquiry this morning will be on main, the three or four important arms of agency of government. One is the NICTA, National ICT Information and Communication Telecommunication Authority. Then we have Office of Censorship, NBC, and PM and NEC, and Department of ICT. So these are the respective line agencies that we have received queries and questions from the regions that we would like to ask them and for them to respond. And whatever recommendation they put forward, we can take it up as part of our recommendation. So I will start because only two agencies are here, NBC and censorship office, so we will start with the censorship office. Welcome, governor. Good morning to you. Okay, governor, as I was explaining, we will ask both NBC and censorship here. We'll ask them based on our regional inquiries, questions. I'll start first with the censorship office. Okay, this is from Madeng, Madeng province. We had an inquiry on the 18th of June 2005 at Divine Ward University. And stakeholders were involved, including educators, police. They raised issues of cyberbullying and violent online content impacting youth mental health and societal norms, calling for content restriction in digital space. So these are the stakeholders in Madeng, they've raised those issues. So we have educators, university lecturers, we have students also, and we have also police who attended, journalists also, and police attended the inquiry. So one first question is, based on their issues and challenges, we form the question. So one first question is, what classification guidelines is the Office of Censorship updating? What classification guidelines is the Office of Censorship updating for digital content, except example, social media videos promoting violence or identity to include mandatory warnings or bans as requested by university counselors to safeguard student well-being and integrate into journalism ethics training? You understood that question? Or you want me to elaborate?
All right.
I'm right there. Okay.
All right, thank you, chairman. Members of the committee, thank you for, and ladies and gentlemen, and media, thank you for your attendance, thank you for the question that was said, I mean, raised in Madeng. You all know that the online content, it's a new development within the technology space now. Classification of Publication Censorship Act 1989 was enacted when there was no internet, no Facebook, and other social media platforms. Therefore, the office is now has gone through its review.
All right, thank you, chairman. Thank you for the question. Censorship Act 1989 was developed when there was no internet, no social media platforms. It's 33 years existence of this act. And with the advancement of technology, the office identified the issues. Therefore, the act is now being reviewed and it's at a final stage now with the state's role. On the question of what classification guidelines that we can give on online environment, it's a new thing for the Office of Censorship. And we have now developed a classification guidelines on online content. And that is something that we have to wait until the act is passed. But we don't have to wait for the act to be passed. We are now implementing that in terms of the classification guidelines that have been developed for online. It's a new environment, which the normal traditional way of doing classification has changed the work of censorship. Therefore, we have now developed the classification guidelines on online environment. And right now, we are now using that to classify those online environment and identifying the URLs and classifying. And now we are working more closely with our stakeholders, not DICT. DICT is the policy, but on the implementation side is the NICTA, which we are working more closely with them. So that's what's happening now, chairman.
The second question. Second question is, how is the office collaborating with police and educational institution to enforce restrictions on harmful online materials, including protocols for reporting cyberbullying calls from provincial police to protect vulnerable Madeng communities?
Thank you, chair. In the police department, we have a cybercrime unit has been established. That's where they can, that's the point of contact. They can raise their questions or refer, not questions, but they can refer those matters to the cybercrime unit. And they can, from there, they can further. On the education part, we have been carrying out or conducting school awareness, school awareness throughout the country. And we are going through primary schools, secondary schools, informing them about the pros and cons about communication, about the medium of communication. So awareness has been ongoing. And we are now touching into higher institutions now, including the youths, trying to inform them about what is technology doing to their lives. Technology, the message is that technology is here to stay. It's how you use it. That is the message that we are delivering to their audience, especially our young generation. So awareness has been one of those activities we have been ongoing to institutions.
The mic to one person, my committee member, to ask about the inquiries raised in Chivaka.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you distinguished presenters and participants in the room. Before I start asking the question, I would want to refer back to yesterday's presentation by Divine Ward University. I think it's frightening to see when they use the term, we are no longer gatekeepers. That is a big statement. If we are no longer gatekeepers, then we allow anything and anything, both good and bad, to enter into our airspace and be consumed by people who are supposed to consume and not supposed to consume. Today, we are in a time where you see little kids, even my five-year-old want to ask for phone every time. So this is an example of kids having access to a little handset. And we cannot stop this. So as a government, as those of us in the room, it's our collective resolve to see how we address this gatekeeper issue. Yes, we have acts, or we are coming up with policies to deal with the crimes that are committed already in a different form and unlike the traditional way of committing crimes before and the acts that were formulated to target in those days. But today is a different game, ballgame altogether. So we have a lot of subject matter experts in the room, especially in IT space. Those that can help us as the committee members to bring all our policy matters to parliament to see if we can get those passed to deal with this new emerging form of crime. That leads me to my question that we received from the people in Chivaka. And this question is directed to the chief censor. One of the questions raised in Chivaka, I think if you see that the questions are the same that has been asked, then you can also say that it's the same. Otherwise, you will have to repeat the same questions, answers all the time and bore us down. So the question that was raised in Chivaka was by a secondary school principal of Nondogul. The question was, what message is the Office of Censorship implementing to classify and prohibit social media content that indicates domestic violence or cultural degradation, including age-based access controls as hedged by police and educators to curb immature online behaviors?
Thank you, thank you for the question. Yes, online, especially if we are talking about Facebook. Facebook is something that is operating out of Papua New Guinea. The operators are out of Papua New Guinea. And yes, it's an issue have been raised to Office of Censorship when we are conducting awareness. Censorship office, the current law does not cater for the Facebook to block. Therefore, we are now working with our stakeholders, that's DICT and NICTA. Every one of us have our statutory mandate to perform our powers. And it is very important that we classify when it comes. Because censorship office mandate is to classify films and publication and say yes or no, and give ratings when it comes to films. But that is something that is beyond our boundary, like Facebook posting on the Facebook. All we see is what is posted. Then we see if it is offensive, we refer to NICTA to ensure that they use their mandate to implement and enforce. All we do is to classify. Therefore, as part of the process and of reforms of the censorship office, we are now amending our act to ensure that we take that responsibility on online so that we can. So work has already commenced already. And I believe our friend, our colleagues from DICT has already put some mechanisms in place with those like people that operate in the outside of PNG, like Facebook or through matter to inform them so that they, so that is what we are doing currently. So to inform those operators outside of Papua New Guinea so that they can assist us in implementing government policies and legislations. Thank you.
Thank you. By that answer, we have the opinion that as the traditional, your cooperation between these two line agencies, you also have protocols in place to not so much of go into another agency's line of duty, but to have some form of synchronizing between you departments or your agencies so you can have visibility or if not share information on how to deal with the particular crime that is run before your desk. So it's all a matter of, by way of policy and act, to see if we can make it possible for all of you to be working together as a unit to address this cybercrime issue in the country going forward from here. Next question is, how will the Office of, how will the Office of Censorship develop awareness campaigns and guidelines for restricting rumors and harmful digital posts in remote areas in response to community leaders' concerns about family breakdowns and misinformation? We all know, we know this country is yet to be fully connected in terms of media and also especially digital space. Most of the people are still in blackouts in terms of communication. They cannot communicate from their respective areas to us. But we do not have to give an excuse. We start mitigating our way around to see how we can best deliver information to our people in the remote areas. So it comes on everybody, everyone of us to do that, politicians, bureaucrats, and civil citizens across the country. So that's the question from a police, rural police commander in Chivaka.
Thank you. Yes, we put our mechanisms together with, I mean, three agencies in terms of internal working committee and external working committee. We have been collaborating and working. We just needed to be more proactive to ensure. And that's something that we have been seeing it's progressing. In terms of the question where the police have asked about the awareness, yes. Awareness is one of our primary activities that we have taken on board, is to disseminate information and informing people, particularly our young generation and people that are about the technology. And we're trying to use all forms of, or all methods of how best we can do awareness. All we need is resource support. When we have lack of resources in terms of finance, that's something that we have been struggling. And for us to go to provinces to provinces, it needs resources. But we have changed our approach in terms of doing awareness. And we want to commend NICTA for, this is a platform that has been used to do awareness on cybercrime. And that's what we want to use, that same platform to do awareness through using all forms of medium of communication to disseminate information through all methods. But all we need is that a censorship office is an office that is enacted and it's been operating, but with limited resource that we have been having. That's the challenge that we have. In order to go through, but some awareness, we'd like to thank NBC for taking that part of the awareness through NBC, through provincial radio stations and national radio here in Port Mosby. And we have been doing awareness through national radio stations. So we'd like to commend Mr. No and his staff for that support that they have been given. So we are using that forms to inform the community on that range.
Thank you. I will now then hand over the mic to another member of the committee to ask questions on Kokopo inquiry.
Now we are, thank you, thank you for your responding to those questions. The questions again, it's from the region. So we have to, you know, do the good justification, I mean, do them justice by raising these questions at this level. So they know that we actually brought them the questions to ask you guys. So now from Kokopo, regional inquiry Kokopo, deputy chairman will ask you those questions.
Thank you, chairman. Good morning all, once again, thank you, Mr. Abani. I have three questions from Kokopo. But before I get into that, I just want to, just on the earlier statement, you did just ask some related questions as well. But I must also commend you, Mr. Abani, on recently having the censorship partner with the Department of Education. I think that's a very good, strong leadership you have shown and a very good initiative in that space. Somebody you mentioned about the Censorship Act 1989, of course, 33 years ago. And times have changed, we have evolved with the introduction of technology. And so one of the, in this review, I wanted to ask, with the introduction of technology, do you have plans to have IT and technology experts to be in your office? Or will you be depending on NICTA to fill that space? That's the first question. The second one, with regards to the classification of the URLs. I think in the previous inquiry, you mentioned about 33,000 URLs that are classified. And it is now up to NICTA to, whether to cut off or remove them from the internet. Do you have the action plan and the timeframe on when these URLs will be acted on to be omitted from the space here?
All right, the first question, the Office of Censorship is now on modern, I mean, there's a call from, as I had, I want to see the Office of Censorship must be modernized and digitalized. That is the long-term plan for the office. And of course, in the digitalization, we do have an IT section within our office. But I am now trying to elevate that office to, I mean, the section to be more modernized and also improve on the infrastructure. Everything that we put plans, it comes with challenges. And you all know what are the challenges. And that is our long-term plan. Now, the Office of Censorship in our act that has been reviewed, it's more, not to be more specific on certain like Facebook, and we use this word, online environment. Online environment covers everything, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, internet, what comes on. So that will cover under that. So as part of the process that now we are improving on the capacity, that is a long-term plan that we are having. And I am now proposing that there should be an infrastructure that has to be built within the office. But looking at the resources side, we don't have to ask for new infrastructure. We have other entities, the government entities, that have the infrastructure there. That money that I am going to ask for should be saved to build roads and bridges and not to build another monster again. We just have to work in collaboration in order to implement what is ahead of us, the work that we are doing. So we got other stakeholders there that we have to use their infrastructure. But in order to do that, we just have to work in collaboration with the partnership so that we can implement those governments' policies and legislations that we have. That's my views. So we have a plan that we, I want to see that the Office of Censorship must have. must have its IT put in place, but the capacity, we are now building the IT. All we need to do is we have to ask our colleagues to deploy some of those that they can assist us in monitoring. We have now set up the mechanism already. We are now monitoring, committee members now, we are monitoring some of those URLs that we have identified and we have sent them. To be honest, it's still, people are not, I mean, some of our, the industry that are big players is still open. Some have used the F words to, you know, block those. But others are still open accessing those. Thank you.
Thank you, Censor. I mean, thirty-three thousand URLs, that's a very big number. And so I, I feel strongly that we really need to take action on blocking some of those access points. I'll just go straight into the two questions. This question is from one of the freelancers. As you know, our freelancers and content creators also participate in social media, creating content and, of course, freelancers putting names out there. So their question is, what partnerships is the office forming with media creators for self censorship guidelines on indecent broadcast, also addressing calls for, to balance freedom with community protection? So that's basically the question on, in terms of content creators. Any guidelines that can guide them on, in terms of their content creation?
Thank you. Thank you, Member. We, we are now already put in place the, the guidelines for, for online content. And that will cover the creators of, the online content creators that will cover the guidelines and the standards. Our board is now put in place and they will be, the ones will endorse and then we will start implementing the guidelines. So the guidelines have been developed already. It's, it's something that, but we are saying that, all right, censorship is doing its part, the government is doing its part. You have to start exercising self censoring, self-regulating. That's the key. That's the key to have our mindset to be healthy. Not to say that censorship or government is not doing anything. We are now pushing that responsibility back to the parents, to the people. Take that ownership to being more responsible at your home, at educational institutions and take that ownership of being exercising self censoring. I think that's the only way we can improve, we can improve on that. Somehow we have to say, okay, we have to start exercising self censoring. You will see Papua New Guinea will be better than forty-nine years ago. That's my view.
Thank you, Censor. The final one, I think most of the questions you've answered. I won't ask the third one. But this is in relation to cyberbullying and fake news. How are you working with the police and the mechanisms that are in place in terms of content removal? Is there, is there a wicked relationship with cybercrime unit on removing content, fake news and support in terms of prosecutions when it comes to cybercrime?
I mean, I, I have to be honest, you know, sometimes every organization, entities want to be on, on their own. They want to implement that they can do. But they want to create their own territory. In that way, we are not going to achieve what we want to achieve. We know that a cybercrime unit is there. We know that NICTA has been established there. I'm not saying that we are not working together, but we are working together. We are working together in terms of implementing. We identify, we give them what issues that we find that is unsuitable for public consumption. And it's other agencies that they have to use their statutory manpower, sorry, mandate to implement, implement. So of course, cyberbullying, cyber harassment, that is something that we, we do have Cybercrime Code Act two thousand and six. Mr. Perrin? Two thousand, National Cyber, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, Cybercrime Code Act. All those offenses are being there. But the question is that who is implementing that? Who is implementing that? We need to find who the agency is implementing that, the Cybercrime Code Act that has been passed. Cybercrime offenses are spelled out clearly in there. Cyberbullying, cyber harassment. We only come to child pornography. Then if we find anything that is child pornography and then that's where the censorship law that talks about pornography. So we try to refer to relevant agencies where they can prosecute. And that's the role of censorship. Cybercrime Act has been existing and we need to have a clear fine of who is implementing. But we don't have to say that we need to work in collaboration. That is all government's documents.
Thank you, Mr. Abani. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I think most of the questions from the provinces are a bit similar, related. So, Alato, you have any questions you want to raise? Otherwise, you can raise from your... I can go? Okay, my questions are not from the inquiries, but generally. It seems that everything now with the digital space is depend on the legislation you're currently working on. So when did you start working on the legislation?
The registration is being started. Commanded at two thousand and fourteen. That was, we were trying to repeal and put a new. But when we, after doing that, we sent to State Hall. We received a letter from State Hall in two thousand and seventeen saying that...
So it took you three years to receive a letter from State Hall?
Yes. Two thousand and seventeen, we received a letter saying that it's, we need to review that act is okay. We just have to amend what is challenging at this stage. So we've done that already. I took the office in two thousand and twenty. And from two thousand and seventeen, it was never been done. And until when I took the office in two thousand and twenty and twenty-one, that was the part of the reforms that I've taken to revisit the amendment. And now we have amended and reviewed only those provisions. And the new provision that we have now indicated is the online environment to cover further technological changes that are happening and that challenges.
So that was in two thousand and twenty?
Two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, so now we are in two thousand and twenty-five. Do you realize that the technology changes like in, in over, not, not, not in even years, it's in weeks or days? Do you realize that?
Yes, Chairman, I know technology changes every now and then within a seconds. But policies and legislations takes time to, 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 to change. And it's a process that takes, takes that time.
So now we are in the third year now, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Now we're in the fourth year now. So what's the status of that amendment? What's the status legislation? Where is it now? Is it in DJG or is it in State Hall? Where's the status now?
Right, Chairman, the, the, the reform of the legislation was assisted by DJG and we have finalized. And it has been given to State Hall. And we are still waiting for State Hall to give clearance.
Okay, Secretary, please take note to summon State Hall to come tomorrow to give us an update on what's the status of, what, what do you call that legislation?
Classification or Publication Censorship Act.
Yes, that's one.
Amendment.
So summon the State Hall to come and give an update on what's the status of that legislation. It's a very important piece of legislation and our children and our young ones are being affected if this legislation is not in place. They're accessing unsolicited content, graphical content on the internet. And so we need to protect them. And that legislation is an important piece that must be, we have to fast-track and make sure that it's in place. I think we, we, we raised that in the last inquiry and now we are the, we are about to finish that inquiry. We are not getting, you, you mentioned that it's still, still with State Hall. So that's really a worry for me. Did they give you an, since the last inquiry, did they give an update?
Yes, Chairman, we have followed up and they, they, they said that there's one or two technical issues that needed to be amended or, you know, to come to some solution. So I, I believe that DJG lawyers, the state lawyers have assisted on that area and, and we, we, it has been given back. That was what I've been informed or advised.
Okay, just want to ask you one, some more questions in, in relations to your powers as a chief censorship officer. Early this year, we saw in the media, the chief censorship or e-content officer commissioner from Australia find ex, you know, Mark, Mark Jacob Beck, not Mark Jacob, sorry, Elon Musk, the ex-platform for publishing some child abuse content or something online. So they, that particular official, chief censorship or commissioner in Australia was able to find X platform, it used to be Twitter, now it's X called X. That's an American platform. So they were able to find that and they charged some money for publishing the content that is not suitable for Australian audience. So with your Amendment Act, are you able to do something like that? If they publish a unsuitable content agreeing to your, our act, our environment?
Yes, Chairman, we have catered that in, in terms of offenses and the penalties. So it's in line with the changes that we are taking within the censorship reforms.
So like that, for example, if Facebook, Facebook allowed the publication of some graphical, graphical limits like Alcatumebloman or kind of some, you know, Putin or Facebook, will you be able to find Facebook? Or charge Facebook for that, that particular?
Yes, Chairman, we, we, we have included in that, but we, we're just waiting to see if that is in line with other international obligations or treaties that we have that will... But otherwise, we will wait for the State Hall to give that advice.
But you have, you have setting fines for those graphics. So sexual, explicit met content like on newspapers or on TV, you have set some fines and rules in your updated legislation to cater for that?
Yes, yes, Chairman, we have included all those, those fines under the offenses.
So can you enforce those fines? We, we, we have a problem with, we creating offices, national offices in Waygani. But issues and challenges are being faced at the provincial and district and local level government areas. So as your office, how are you, how will you enforce that at a local, at a, at a world level or LG level? How are you, have you thought of that, implementing, enforcing those penalties and fines at the local level, government level?
Chairman and committee members, last year, we, we took this approach to establish the censorship, provincial censorship working committee in the provinces because the issues are not in Port Moresby alone. It has been faced in the provinces and districts. So now the, the, the committee has been established in border areas. One was in Sandown last year. And we are now looking at Millen Bay, we visited Millen Bay. And this year, October or November, we will be visiting West New Britain because we, we, we look at the strategic areas where we, we want to take the provinces as pilot to see before we roll out to many, many provinces. So on the border area, we, we put, we established the committee already, provincial censorship provincial committee at Sandown Province. We had a conversations, we had a meeting with Millen Bay Provincial Administration. This is because of the, like yesterday, we had that they have the mess marine area. That's why we want to put that. And West New Britain was, we had a visit this year. And now we have been conversing with the provincial administration to put the West New Britain, the censorship provincial committee in there to help us because West New Britain, I strongly believe that West New Britain is the gateway to the older NGI provinces. And that's where I want to set the committee so that they can start rolling out or informing other provinces within NGI that, within the strategic area.
Do you know that Morrobe is a gateway to nine provinces or eight provinces?
Yes, Morrobe is, Chairman, Morrobe is one of them that is in the, in our pipeline that...
And it's also the largest province?
It's the largest...
And the biggest consumer of all this illicit information and graphical limits?
Yes, Chairman, Morrobe is, in, 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 in my thinking, that Morrobe is one of that, that provinces that has to put provincial censorship committee has to be established within Morrobe too. Because Morrobe covers Moemase and, and Islands region where Morrobe is the gate to all those other provinces.
Okay, so we, we're looking forward to establish that particular committee in the provinces. Having a trust partnership with the province is very good because we establish offices at a national level, but we don't align them with the provinces and the local level government. So that's why we pass good laws, policies up at the top level at Waygani, but it's not been translated down to the, our people which are based in LG and provinces. My other question is, so that, that ties up again with your limited resources, your concerns for limited resources. So when you establish partnership like that, you at least have provincial government, local level government coming to support you to enforce those. What do you think about that?
Yes, it's, it's, it's sharing resources and saving costs. So that is my thinking that if censorship office is in the central pro, I mean, in, more centralized in Waygani, then a committee will be in the provinces. And we are now asking for partnership. I am O U to assist us in what we want to implement within the provinces. And a good governor for West, West New Britain is here and is aware of my discussions that are with the provincial administration. And we want to see support from the, the provinces in order to take that ownership too, so that we can share the work of censorship at the provincial level.
Thank you. I think NBC has branches all the, all across the, most, I think, every provinces. But it's some national agency do not have branches like NBC. So partnership with province and DDAs is very important in this. Okay, my other question is related to, that's about ethical. And I think University of, the one word a student and staff raised is... And I think University of, uh, the one word a student and staff raised is, and it's, it's, uh, it's important. So yes, we want to police, uh, police content on, on the news media when it comes out. But what about, um, training, getting them, bringing those ethical programs to them? So it's, it's our, it's especially at the mainstream media where news reporting is, uh, a bit recognized, not like social media platform, where the media organizers, since they would have editorial, editorial room or some, some sort of, you, that's one area where ethics can come into place, ethical reporting can come in place. And then you have the media council. And also you have institutions that provide, uh, media journalism studies. Do you have collaboration or do you plan to have collaboration or you have current collaboration with those, uh, particular areas? The edit, editorial room for respective news agency like Postcora National, uh, MTV? You have collaboration with them editorial room or also, and do you have collaboration with the media council? And do you have collaboration with, uh, all these our journalism students, uh, that you, institutions that provide journalism courses to promote ethical and responsible, uh, reporting?
Yes, Chairman, censorship is, uh, censorship promotion, ethical values, upholding traditional values and Christian principles. That is our mission, our mission for the office. Uh, as part of the, um, ongoing activities that we're, what we've been doing, um, we have been, um, uh, just a few weeks ago, uh, the University of Papua New Guinea, um, Journalism Stream has invited, um, censorship office to partake in one of their lecturing classes. And we, we opened doors for, you know, institutions to inform us so that, uh, we can be contributing, informing them about the importance of our value statements. That's respect, professionalism, integrity and commitment. That's what we want, we have been, so University of Papua New Guinea has opened, uh, uh, their doors. They have sent the invitation and, uh, we took part, uh, uh, two years ago in their, uh, me, uh, media day. And also, uh, three weeks ago, uh, we did a presentation in their, uh, one of those class, uh, lecture classes. So it's, it's open that we, we wait for any institutions to inform us. But of course, um, 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 our, our mainstream media, Office of Censorship is there. We open doors for them to tell us to go and inform them about the mission of the office that we have and the mission for the office. It's about upholding moral decency and ethics. That's, that's the bottom line of the office.
No, no, I'm not interested for you to open the doors. I'm asking if you go and collaborate with them, like because you are the chief censorship officer. So instead of waiting for them to come to you, if you go to them, say that, for example, University of PNG, uh, you look at the journalism program and they have, uh, different course. So do they have ethic, journalism ethic course? And if they have journalism ethic course, have you looked into what, what course outlets they are providing? And you can contribute in, into those areas so that instead of like one-off media day show and all this, it should be part of the program or part of the studies. Have you, have you thought of going, doing that? Or have you done that?
Uh, Chair, that, uh, that is one of the, um, the reforms that the Office of Censorship is doing. And we have taken on board on, uh, expanding our work with other institutions. And, uh, we have done that with, um, especially the NBC in terms of informing through using their radio station to conducting awareness. And we have gone through all those, uh, radio stations that are within the province. And we are now taking that approach to inform, uh, going into some institutions. And, uh, we will, uh, I will take that as one of my takeaway from this, uh, this discussion.
Yes, uh, I strongly suggest that you go to those institutions, see their programs, their course outline and make sure that ethics, journalism ethics is there, if they, if it's there. And so that whatever guidelines for censorship must be captured in those programs. So once the journalism students learn about, uh, journalism and part of ethics, they also learn about censorship, uh, guidelines and framework.
Yes, Chairman, um, and the committee members, we, we have now, uh, a few years ago, two years or two, yeah, two years ago, we've signed the MOU with Education Department. It's about, uh, um, us working together. And as part of the, uh, ongoing activities of informing students about the, uh, work of censorship and its values. Now, uh, we have elevated that program up to, um, a manual has been developed and it has been consented by Education Department. So we are using that manual and now, uh, we have started, uh, bringing all the guidance and counseling teachers and school, senior school inspectors to one spot and then run through those programs that are censorship is having. So the guidance and counseling teachers and the school inspectors can take that manual to go back to their schools and inform. So that is what we have been, uh, taken on board and we've started two years ago. And we just, uh, finished, uh, two, two sessions this year. One was for southern region and it was held in Port Moresby in March Gels. And just last month for Highlands region in Mount Agan. And the outcome and the support that we received from the schools are, are very moment that we have seen that they are here to support us in carrying out the censorship programs to the schools. So that is, we have taken out of it and we are now moving that direction.
Thank you, very good. Thank you, uh, Chief Censorship Officer for your contribution. Uh, one final, along that same ethical line, uh, how's your relationship with the editorial newsroom for its, uh, media outlet? Are you, are you collaborating with them? Are they, is there some sort of media day meeting or you organize with them?
Yes, um.
Because this, we are talking about media journalism ethics and, uh, the content before, like you said, it's yes or no when for print media. It goes, it goes. You cannot stop it on, online or you cannot stop the print. When it's printed, it's printed. So we need to prevent it before it actually print or we need to prevent it before it's actually go online. So the relationship, maintaining the relationship and keeping them up to date with the ethics and so they don't forget is important too. So from the censorship officer, I've, uh, well, how's your relationship and all this with these media rooms?
Yes, Chairman and the members, um, Office of Censorship, um, is always there to ensure that the content, what comes out is suitable for Papua New Guinea consum-, for consumption. Anything that is out of context, we can pull in for explanation. Our collaboration, we, our, our collaboration with, sorry Chair, our, our collaboration with the media, we, we, we always inform them. And Chair, I, I'd like to inform the committee that, uh, PNG Media Council rep is in the censorship board.
Okay, very good.
So he is the one to ensure that, that information, that policy discussions, that they discuss at that policy level must be disseminated down to all the media. And the media council president automatically the member of censorship board. So we have censorship board. So it's, it's there already been established. So that's what we are doing now. We, we don't have to wait for, you know, what comes up and we go in, that media council, they have their mechanisms in place there.
Okay, that's very good. We want to prevent it before it gets to the public. So at least, uh, at least, uh, yes, when it gets to the public, you are there to policy it, enforce your rules and legislation. But it's also important to make sure that, uh, they, they don't get to be published and all this. So like journalism schools, ethics and also having that relationship with media council and the newsroom is very important. Thank you. I think, uh, from, uh, from my end, I have enough with the questions. You have any questions?
Chairman, you have asked every single question which you can probably ask on the, uh, chief censorship, uh, chief censor. Just to give justice only, because the regional, you know, consultation covered all the areas, like one is, uh, the southern region. I mean, these questions raised by, when the committee visited in Alatau, you know, by people in Alatau, especially by PPC, PHA CEO. But take it for granted, it's exactly the same questions where we have elaborately, you know, discussed. I just, you don't have to answer these questions actually, because the, some of the answers have already been given. PPC in Alatau is generally asking what strategies is the Office of Censorship adopting to restrict indies and social media content contributing to family issues and cyber crimes, including verification for island broadcasts as highlighted by police and administration. It's raised by our PPC in Alatau. Like we are discussing in general, talking about media content. I remember seeing you since the tape recorder, we were using cassettes and then transformed to CD, then transformed to, you know, flash drive and all those things. You come and, you know, confiscate some CDs which are not appropriated, appropriate or which are not like classified and all those things. As much as we talk about all those ones going into print media, you know, now the digital platform, you, you, you can't, um, like I, I just see one of that content was like now finally they managed to stop it from appearing. I shared it in government group. They are bringing women like, uh, you know, how also bringing pig, yeah? Time to blood leg, na tupla hand low, one I must stick here, na all hold him stick na come, all cookie mole, live. Two, they are split opening the leg and then putting them and then putting fire underneath. All these contents are in PNG, just freely available all over Facebook. So this is where I think maybe your department, I, I really concerned whether your department has any kind of resources or, you know, uh, resources in terms of funding or even capacity to address any such, you know, issues. Because it's like, uh, given rise to the digital media, does your department have adequate resources, technology and train staffs to carry out its mandate in the modern communication environment? Because apparently you need resources, you need trained personals in order to, you know, go after. I think some of these things also very related to ask with DICT and, you know, NICTA, because they were saying there are some treaty to be signed in order for us to talk to Facebook and stop. Until such a time, Facebook themselves find out this is something like, you know, terrible scenes, then they are blocking it. But otherwise it is keep coming, it's keep coming. And one of the citizen in my province is like blasting on it, may you see what is happening, you know? You guys should raise this one in parliament and all those things. But like what Mr. John Higgins was saying, you know, as much as we do not want to talk negative, but the things are continuously happening. And because we have not taken any action, whether through censorship board or whether through police, it's another question is how well you really work with police and other departments to, you know, in order to, in your areas of responsibility to punish someone. Because there are rarely evidences of some severe punishment, you know, done for all those. Because it's very easy to go after the person who actually put this content. From him, then we can source where exactly it happened and all those things. So that's why I just talk about, uh, the resources and all those things. I think you have answered elaborately on many things. Everything is subject to the legislation, you know, which you need to connect to the modern technology and all those things. Because your legislation is, uh, not really, um, amended to meet all those modern requirements and all. So these are the two basic concerns, like the enforcement tools you have. Thank you.
All right, uh, we'll, we'll take note of, uh, and now, as, as part of the inter-agencies, um, you know, ads coming together, we can address and how we can connect to each other. And, uh, it will help us to minimize some of those issues, uh, that have been raised by our people in the provinces. And also, um, uh, the advancement of the technology that's happening, how we're going to, you know, attend to such issues that are now happening. And I can admit that, um, officer censorship is just only, um, it's an office, uh, under the Ministry for Community Development and it's only sixty manpower that we have. And, uh, to, to police, uh, uh, such issues countrywide, it's, it's a challenge for us. And that's why we are now giving back the responsibility to parents, the citizens of this country to take that ownership, to start exercising self-censoring. So we'll take note of, uh, Governor York, uh, statement and we can, uh, in, meet with, uh, I can meet with our, uh, other colleagues from the other agencies to discuss on that area.
Okay, thank you, Chief Censorship Officer. We'll, uh, thank you for your participation, but you stay on, uh, we'll go, because you're the same line from the same industry. So we'll, we'll now, uh, go to NBC. Uh, thank you, MD, for NBC, you are here now. You can take over the mic and, uh, we'll, we'll start again. Uh, the questions are from the regions. So, uh, Mr., sorry, Honorable Sasi Motivul will start first from Alatau with the questions from Alatau.
This is NBC.
Thank you, thank you, Director NBC. This is, uh, again from the provincial administrator from, uh, Alatau. What plans does NBC have to upgrade VHF and radio infrastructure for remote Millen Bay islands? I think you have heard from them yesterday, you know, in their workshop, the Millen Bay disaster executive manager plus their deputy administrator, they were, I mean, extensively requesting and talking about this VHF radio, you know, not working because mostly they have the, um, what do you call FM only. So has requested by provincial administrator to improve access to reliable news. That's one. Then the second question is, how is NBC collaborating with PNG Media Council to develop ethics training for broadcasters? But calls from Media Council Chairman to address the misinformation. That's actually from, uh, Mr. Neville Choi. The third one is what health awareness programs is NBC creating with provincial health authorities? Including content on social media risk as suggested by the health officials and youth leaders by provincial health authority CEO in Alatau. This is a basic, simple, three questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, committee. Uh, I'll answer the first question on plans for transmission. Generally, we, we treat, we, we at NBC treating, um, Millen Bay as one of, uh, under our, um, border provinces. So in, in the border provinces, we, uh, we, we appreciate the, most of them are the maritime provinces. So we appreciate the vastness of the, the provinces and the islands that come with it. So our current FM, FM transmission is not sufficient to extend to the provinces. So like in Daru and, uh, we also have in, currently as we speak, we have in, uh, setup in Buin as well. So we have in a five kilowatt, sorry, five kilowatt medium wave transmitter been set up in Buin, a ten kilowatt, uh, one in Daru. And we also planning the same for Millen Bay. Like, um, medium wave, uh, travels a lot further overseas. So that's why the, the particular emphasis on the maritime provinces. So that's, that's our plan for Millen Bay to set up a ten, ten kilowatt, uh, medium wave transmitter there. What's the, what's the second one? Second question, sorry.
The second one is about, um, of course, the Millen Bay one, the report has been, they had no radio for some time. This ten kilowatt you are now talking about, is it being implemented or you going to implement?
We, we are implementing the, we, uh, the, the medium wave one.
Okay.
And I think the, the issue with the. And I think the, the issue with the FM one is a console. So since we last spoke with the chairman, I've checked with the, the technical guys. They told me they are going to the two million bay this weekend to set up the console. It's to do with the console that was blown by the surge in power. So they are going this weekend to.
So you, you have the resource and the capacity to do it? Or you would need the provincial government or members to step in to assist?
For this one, we will, we, we have, we purchased the console. In fact, we purchased six or that's going to a few, six provinces now and we have the funds to do this one now.
Okay, thank you. The second question was how NBC collaborating with PNG Media Council? Like, because NBC plays a national role in promoting unity, public awareness. So basically what plans do you have to strengthen the provincial radio stations? Which you have now talked about Buin and a few other stations where you installed five kilowatts or ten kilowatt, you know, what do you call?
Medium wave transmitter, radio transmitter.
Transmitters, yeah, five kilowatt transmitters. So, yeah, so how NBC collaborating with PNG Media Council to develop ethics training for broadcasters? This is, you know, requested by Neville Choi.
Yeah, we are, to start us off, we are, we are part of the PNG Media Council as well. And we take, we take media ethics seriously as well. We, although we are a public broadcaster, we guard our news, our editorial independence very jealously at the NBC. We don't have, we, we don't, as, as long as I've been there, we haven't had any political interference in our, in how we decide on which news to take. So that's been wonderful. Also, we are, I think, if not the only one, until recently, I think the PNG Media Council have developed their own. We are, NBC has its own editorial guidelines. It's a thirty-five page document that we have that guides our, how we run our stories. It's no longer sufficient to balance the story. As part of the editorial guidelines, we have to have multiple sources to, to satisfy before we run a story. So especially the bigger, bigger stories. So in terms of ethics, I think we've a bit ahead of the rest of our colleagues in the PNG Media that we have written down thirty-five page editorial policy. And of course, we work alongside our media colleagues in keeping our ethics growing.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Director. I mean, you have answered that question which I was about to ask about strategies in place to ensure balanced and independent and unbiased news coverage, free from political or commercial influence, which you have, I think, sufficiently answered just now. How is NBC adapting to the digital, you know, transformation? I think yesterday you were talking about internet radio and all, including online platforms and social media, to remain relevant and accessible, especially to our younger audiences?
Thank, thank you for that question. We, we, NBC was, is traditionally radio and, and just recently television as well. And in recent times, we've, we've introduced our online news as well. So that's like Governor, you were saying, it's, it's, it's more, more mostly towards the youth. But then also it's one of our means to address the issue of coverage that we have in the country. We've got so many legacy issues as, as much as possible, we want to extend our terrestrial coverage of the television and radio. We appreciate that, especially the ISP is already in the, in, in districts as well. So we're trying to improve our services. So most of our, our services at least have been received on the mobile phone as well. So that's, that's the trend that we are heading towards.
Thank you, thank you, Director.
Thank you. I think I just want to, there's a question raised by Melon Bay yesterday and you are not here. They request, from the disaster office, they request that NBC, Melon Bay must be operational. Currently it's not operational. So the, the consulting will fix, make it operational?
Chairman, I'll make, I'll make it my business to have, have the staff travel to Melon Bay this weekend. We have, we must have at least FM operational by next week. I'll report back to you.
Okay, you mentioned that the console is, is destroyed because of power surge, power, PNG power problem. So have you, how are you planning to, because you are bringing a new console in? So you have UPS or backups that we don't have the same problem again?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank, thank you for the question. And that's the reason why they, they not, they, they cannot leave today until the weekend. They currently at the TEPNG sourcing UPS and the computer to go with, to go with it. Going forward in the medium term, we are into hybrid power. So we're trying to get solar, the main grid and chance set to keep us going. Because as we appreciate across the country, that's one of our challenges as well. And being a broadcaster, it really impacts on our broadcaster hours as well.
MD, you realize, you realize that Melon Bay is a very disaster prone area. So therefore about six hundred islands and atolls. So their, their agency for communication, especially on radio is very important. So the committee appealed that you put more emphasis on Melon Bay. Make sure that the radio is, network is connected to especially all the major island, the district headquarters and LNG headquarters. So that they, they receive the signals from NBC or shortwave or medium wave, all this. Can I get an assurance from you that that will be taken care of by you, NBC? Or you need help from NICTA or any other, any other agencies to help you to make sure that is implemented?
Thank you, Chairman. I, 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 I know for sure there's a kilo, a ten kilowatt medium wave transmitter at NBC at this, at this time. I'll check with my technical staff if we can take that to Melon Bay. Because FM, we can set it up next week, but if the coverage will still be limited. But medium wave will go a long way in doing that. So can I come back to the committee by next week?
Notice, committee will note it down and next inquiry, we'll ask and follow up on this one. Ten kilometers?
Ten kilowatt.
Ten kilowatts?
Uh, medium wave.
Medium wave.
Radio transmitter.
Ten kilowatt medium wave radio transmitter for Melon Bay.
Melon Bay.
Thank you. Committee, you can ask for the regions. I'm asking for your, Alatau also, you can ask for the.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman, for your support. Thank you, MD, for those responses being from there. I think people will appreciate that service. MD, my questions will be from Kokopo, the Kokopo Inquiry. Just three questions from there. I'd like to start the question by asking you, for the sake of our records. With East New Britain Province, I think they have an understanding with an MOU between the province and of course NBC. Can you expound on what this MOU is about and how many provinces are you engaged with in terms of this memorandum of understanding? And has it been helpful? Has it progressed media in these provinces and the challenges? Or is it the way forward for us? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I think with the good governor here, West New Britain and Morobe have been for us the model provincial governments to work with in terms of these MOUs. To give some background, NBC has thirteen staff in each of the provinces now. They, they run those offices. They're pretty expensive to run and they are closer to our people. That's why the provincial governments are critical stakeholder and partner for NBC. So we've gone into, it used to be just understanding that the provincial government helps in the upkeep of, in some, in meeting some of the operation, daily operations, operational expenses of NBC. But we've now formalizing them to MOU. So currently we have five assigned MOUs. We've got East New Brit, uh, NBC, yeah, East New Britain, NBC, West New Britain, Enga, Morobe and Manos. We are signing the sixth one with NBC New Island, between NBC New Island and the NBC, New Island Provincial Government, thirteenth of this month in, in KBN. East New Britain has requested a renewal, so that's the one that's been finalized. And we will sign as soon as it's, our legal staff have told us from both sides. We have given drafts to every other province. Only NBC sundown has come back to us. They are ready to sign. So of all the provincial governments that we have, we've got five plus the one later this month, that's six. Sundown is going to be seven. So we've got another fourteen or fifteen to get back our drafts from provincial governments and proceed to sign in. The national government still, under the MOU, the national government still funds our salaries. Most of our operations, the, the provincial governments like West New Britain has through the, through the MOU have purchased a five kilowatt medium wave transmitter which we installed in Kimbe and some studio equipment as well. And the content we agree on is sixty percent NBC to provide and forty, forty percent provincial government to provide. And some of those, under this MOU, we cut down on some of the provincial law district visits because they can do broadcast from NBC. And that's, that's, that's what we also encouraging that provincial governments come in and do their awareness or their initiatives and policies, the promotion of those ones through NBC radio as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I think that answers one of the questions, but I'll just ask it because it's been asked by the Archbishop, Catholic Archbishop in Rabaul. What is NBC developing with church partners to promote positive content? Given all the violent and negative contents that are in the social media and the influences? This is the request by the church representative in terms of church involvement in NBCs in the provinces.
Thank, thank you. We, we have, we take the cue from the Catholic Church. We have a, we have a Sunday mass on NBC radio that's well received by the Catholics. So we've been encouraging other churches to, to come in and do similar. So we, we see ourselves as the conduit and not only for the churches, but every, every other stakeholder. We are the conduit. You, you come and do your, promote the content through the NBC. So we encourage that the churches are asking of how they can work with NBC. We just encourage them to come by and use our, well, the television now and radio. And we also streaming events as requested. So more it's encouraging stakeholders to come to NBC and see us more as the conduit towards, between the churches and the followers on the other side of NBC.
Thank you. The second question is in relation to equipments, the broadcasting equipments, maybe not only in East New Britain, but for all provincial radio stations. How are you going with that?
Thank you. I'll start with, because the question came from East New Britain, I'll start, start then and we can go to the other provinces. We, we, we had issues with our studio at, in Kokopo. So the staff have temporarily relocated to the library still within the, the studio there. So they also have an issue with the, the console. So that's been, that's been looked, that's been purchased. So the technical staff have to, to go to Kokopo and set this up as well in, in the, in the library. They also have an issue with the main duct in. When we talk duct in aircon, then that becomes a bigger, bigger expense. So it's within the whole building. So we had PM visit us, visit us as, as, as the building as it was. And then he pledged a million kina to help with the, the resuscitation of the, the place. So a proposal has been forwarded to PM for, to utilize those funds. So that's, that's NBC, East New Britain. And it's unfortunately, the, the situation is across the whole, whole setups of NBC in the country. So in, in the past, before my time, there was a request for huge amounts of money to, and rightfully so to revive the NBC. So what we were told when I came in, what we were told was instead of going for the whole layer that we, we did, it's, it's genuine to ask for it, but other sectors are equally deserving of government support. So we were asked to do a five-year plan. So we came up with the, the rehabilitation and modernization program of NBC. And we got funding through the PIP over five years since 2019. So we started with the renovation of the office buildings and the studios in the provinces. So we completed that in twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-five, we did the renovations for headquarters here and that's been done now. So now for the twenty twenty-six PIP budget, we requested funding to look into staff housing in the provinces as well. So no quick fix for the, the carryall of issues that we have at, at NBC. But we've started with the studio facilities, the office facilities, look into the, the staff housing, but in, in between, funding is made available to us. We do maintenance work on the current facilities we have across the country, including headquarters.
Thank you, MD. Really appreciate that answer. NBC has been a foundational agency and fifty years on, we, we keep on supporting and we look forward to those modernizing plans. Finally, this is in regards to NBC staff training. I believe, I think the Media Council did a training on online, online news somewhere in the Highlands. And I think they are doing the regional training. This is back to of course NBC on your plans for training of your staff, especially with AI, fake news detection as well. Is there any plans on training for your staff and the, to enhance their capability as well?
Thank you. We, we are, we are gonna take our cue from the Department of ICT in terms of the development of the policy on AI. But in the meantime, our training and both AI and other, other broadcast training as well. We've been fortunate to maintain our long relationship with the ABC. So we do many of our training courses through the ABC. Either experts come in here or we, we sending our, our staff to either Brisbane or Sydney where they have a bigger setups. And we have had three officers already been embedded in ABC news setups.